... motion to approve providing immediate access of the Belmont Market space to Library Board of Trustees.
Right, move that motion.
Second.
Discussion this item comes from Mr. Murray and Mr. Pugh.
Okay, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. A couple of months ago, the Library Board of Trustees put out an RFP, which is a request for a proposal for architects to go in there and kind of hone in on the cost of building out that space. But the town has not let these architects go on the premises. So this is a respective request, an up and down vote by this council to grant the Library Board of Trustees permission to access the Belmont Market space for the purpose of exercising the current RFP for the build-out of the subject space. So this is pretty basic stuff here. I know how we feel, but you guys up for that? I think, you know, the Library Trust and their supporters, I think they might be our best buyers if you want to sell the building. They may be able to put a 401, a 501(c)(3) together and maybe make a purchase, but then we know the true cost of the build-out of that space. What do you think?
So you're asking for it during the sales process? You're asking for access for one department to have the access to this building?
No, I'm asking, I'm asking for the Library Trust to exercise their RFP and let the architects go in so they can come up with different plans on the refit of that space, the Belmont Market.
All right, thank you. Any comments or questions from the council?
Yeah, I also would support this, this motion. We bought the top off the building to be used as the library last fall, so we haven't sold it, still owned by the town. The RFP is out. You can't really get bids for an RFP without letting prospective contractors or architecture firms walk the premises. I don't know of any other incidents where a department has been locked out of a building in town in this way, so I definitely would support this, this motion.
All right, thank you. Well, this is the purchase of the building, but right now they, there's not ownership by the library of that building. So, and the RFP went out, the town didn't send out an RFP, the Board of Trustees independently sent out an RFP.
Understood.
And there also is a fact that we voted on January 27th to sell the building.
Is it listed in any MLS?
There is a fact that we voted on January 27th to sell the building.
Is it listed?
Jesse, I'm not going to answer that question. We actually voted to sell the building on January 27th.
Is it listed as a real estate for sale? Anyway.
Well, it doesn't mean we couldn't, you know, get a sense of what the build-out costs, you know, from these architects. I mean, I mean, there's always a plan B in the event that we do not sell the space. I wonder you have an epiphany that, you know, we may be able to have some more information that the build-out will not be that expensive as previously discussed.
The town council didn't vote to put on RFP, the Board of Trustees did.
Exactly. That's why I'm asking.
So that is very strange. Most departments don't go out and put RFPs without the authority of the Board of Trustees.
Well, there's been a lot of strange stuff happening here. So, this, I know this isn't protocol, but, you know, I, I think we've spent years working on this project. I think to give the library the ability to exercise this RFP is not a great burden to the town at this time.
It is very much outside protocol. That's what you have correct.
So is your behavior.
Okay.
Does anyone want to comment on this? Yes.
Lori Kelly, Wildfield Farm Road. Thank you once again, Patrick and Jesse, for putting this on to try to support the library and the people of Town of Narragansett who truly want this to go forward. To answer Mr. Mannix's statement, how odd this is, I don't remember an RFP going out on the Cabanas for the rebuild this semester, whatever it is, the year, because it would seem to me that when people in Town Narragansett vote for something and they're above the town council as to, you know, the hierarchy here, it should be followed. We did not have an RFP for the Cabanas. I'm not picking on Parks and Rec. They do an excellent job. I love the schools. I'm not, I'm not attacking another department. But when you say that, well, this is really odd, I think it's really odd that no one voted to redo the Cabanas, no one had an RFP on the Cabanas. It was a secret little thing that came forward where they said, okay, we've discussed this behind closed doors, we're going to go forward with that. That also seems odd to me. Is it, is it acceptable? Fine, we all love the beach, we love the, we love the facility that we have in the town, but to say, to single us out that we did an RFP and how odd that is, I think that you're not being fair to the library once again. Thank you.
I'll just name an address for the record. I apologize. Everybody who comes up, please give your name and address.
Catherine Celeberto, 48th Street. I'd like to know if anyone on the town council has seen this RFP. Do they have the name of the architect? Do, and how far has this gone? In other words, I know I've got some kind of meeting with people who might be interested in working on this project, but has someone been picked? Has someone been picked, an architect been picked to? No. So who are we going to take in? Who are we going to need?
Oh, there's several, there'd be several architects. Yeah, I mean, but the problem is, I mean, they're architects, they need access to the building, they can't do anything without looking at the building.
Has anyone seen the RFP?
Yes.
And everybody's seen it, okay. But no one person has looked yet. Now, hasn't this building been reviewed before? Haven't there been other RFPs? Haven't people gone in? I mean, is there a kind of frame of reference for any of this?
No, not, not for refit for the library, I'm sure.
Well, you know, it's a lot.
Catherine, let's make it a comment instead of a back.
All right.
As to what's.
I, I, I'm opposed frankly, unless something else comes to light, something we don't know. I can't imagine why this would happen. The building was for sale. They don't own the building, the town owns the building. In the story. Thank you.
Thank you.
Meg Rogers, 68th Earl Street Court, Narragansett. So Catherine Celeberto, my neighbor, who's a lovely woman who votes in Naples, Florida, who is absolutely bright, the town bought the building. That means that our elected representatives in the prior council exercised a contract to purchase the building to build our new library, for whom? For we, the people. And we, the people of Narragansett, own that building. Not Matthew Manitz, not Jim Lawler, and not Councilor Lima. You don't own the building. Well, you, if you pay taxes, I guess you do own the building. If you don't pay taxes, you don't. So some of you do own the building, but I think it's the guy that doesn't pay the taxes who wants to deny his access to our building. Think about that. The guy that doesn't pay taxes wants to deny my representative in my library, my Board of Trustees, access to a building that was purchased with taxpayer money. Catherine Celeberto has a stake in that building, she pays taxes in the town. The people of Narragansett own the building, Matthew, and we are asking you respectfully to give us, through our Library Board of Trustees, access to that building. Thank you.
Yeah, hi. The great communicator Ronald Reagan said in Berlin, Mr. Gorbachev, tear down the score. I, I say to the town council, open up the doors to the second floor over the latest store. Let the public see what we have brought. I'll be there in my shuffleboard suit, even though my doctor says I'm too old to play shuffleboard. The only thing that is good for the second floor is a shuffleboard course, and let the public see how useless that structure is. It was the greatest error ever made to purchase the second floor over the latest store.
Thank you.
Lily Westen, Silver, 5th June. Thank you everyone for coming on behalf of every child who loves the library who couldn't attend tonight's meeting. The library has been such a special place for me my entire childhood, not just me, but every kid who loves reading. I've lived in Narragansett my entire life, and I've been brought to the library ever since I can remember by my mom and my grandparents. For me growing up, the library was a safe place for my brother, mom, and I. Listen, for kids who don't have internet access to computers are there to do their homework so they don't fail their classes. People who don't have homes who want access to the world from the internet, people who don't have internet or computers. Budget cuts equal no more computers. Libraries are education, libraries are family, libraries are peaceful. The library is my childhood, I want my library, don't take it away.
And I'm Chap Schaller, 64th Highway Street, Board Member of the Trustees. I would like to thank all the families that came out tonight with young children because I know I usually have a forum that's up ahead of the meeting, but Charles, put it at the end of the meeting by you, Mr. Mannix, and supported by you, Ms. Rolla, and supported by you, Mr. Lima. So these, these students would like to come and speak and participate in the government, but they obviously can't, it's going to be at 10:30 or 11 o'clock at night. And you, Mr. Mannix, making your wise cracks about how this is a weird thing, that the trustees are doing RFPs. Well, I guess you haven't done your homework and read the state regulations about the library, and who is in charge of making plans for the library. We even had someone from the state library come and speak to you and speak to the council, and you just refuse to believe or listen to anybody, even though it's in the regulations. That I find extremely weird. This is a democracy, it was passed by the state legislature for the benefit of libraries, and you seem to have another idea of who should be in control. And I really resent that, and I resent all the names you've called the library supporters right along, as if you're some sort of nobody, that has a pre-understanding of what's going on in town, as opposed to the rest of us. And so it is a little unusual for the state to put this up, but this is exactly the reason, because I don't want it to become a political thing, and I would say to you, three, that you're more interested in the politics than you are in supporting the whole of this community, which is the library. Shame on me.
Wait one second, this will be our last speaker before our public hearing, which is getting to 8 o'clock. Go ahead.
My name is Nathan Hookin, 84th South Pier Road, and as a child of Narragansett, I would like to speak on behalf of the other students who grew with me in my fall leaves. Being a student, there's a certain curriculum in which we have to follow in school. There are certain things that we have to learn about which is not our capabilities to switch. Although our school has a library, does not provide as much resources as Mary Lucian's Memorial Library always has. Here, I don't have to gain information on the curriculum that I learn about five days a week, 42 days of the year. Instead, in this library, I don't just read, I don't just read about the curriculum, I learn about filmmaking, art styles, climate change, and I can basically write about whatever I want. The Mary Lucian's Memorial Library is my happy place. I learn about my passion, I learn about what I want to do with my life, but most importantly, and sadly that's recognized by others, I learn about morals. When I was in third grade, I opened my first Jerry Spinelli book. I learned that kindness over powers all character traits. When I was in sixth grade, I opened my first Harry Potter book, it told me that bravery can come in all types of forms. This year, as an eighth grader, I opened a book about Andy Warhol. I learned that living a life not being yourself is a life not really being lived. I can't help but wonder what would have happened if those doors to the library had been locked when I was in search of knowledge. Today, I am very angry. I am very angry that this library is not going, that may not be here for the future people who are in search of knowledge. But after reading many books, I have learned that anger can help us achieve our passions.
And then we'll go to, we'll have a stenographer set up for 8 o'clock.
My name is Mal Doltenberg, I live at 25 Earl Street, I guess I'm the third person from Earl Street. And I generally tend to be a very pragmatic and non-political type person, very much focused on common sense. There are two things here. Number one, I'm very much in favor of the library, but in terms of getting an RFP, I think we owe it to the pro side and to the con side to go in and see what we physically have in that building. It may end up, you know, when the architects look at it and they come with, with what it's going to cost to convert it to what we want, that it is outrageous and it might be the smartest thing to do is sell the building, or it might be a lot less expensive than we think, and the three of you might come around and say, you know, this is a pretty good idea now, it's within the budget and everything else, and change your mind and not sell the building and create the library that everybody in this town, well, 68.7% of the people who voted wanted. Thank you.
Second public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2020 budget. It's a motion to open a public hearing. All in favor? I'm, all opposed, motion approved five to zero. I'm going to ask our new finance director to come forward and present for us. We had three work sessions, and those, and the work sessions were looking at all the town departments, and we now have a presentation from our new town finance director. So welcome. Thank you, go ahead.
Good evening, Council President Mannix, council members, Acting Town Manager Gordon. Tonight I'll be presenting the overview of the 2019, 20, sorry, 2020 Town Council Proposed The first slide is the estimated 1920 levy to the tax rate, and as you can see on the bottom of the slide, we're looking at a 3.6% increase in the levy and a proposed increase in the residential tax rate of 3.37 or 3.4, which will bring the rate up to $10,029 per thousand. The next slide. Mike.
Sorry.
Thank you. Has the notable changes in the budget? There is an increase in the funding for capital projects. We continue to fund the contributions for the, at 100%, for the pension and the OPEC funds. We added a DPDW position half-time this year, in the middle of the year. Again, the tax levy at 346, Mac and Val preserved to cover the capital, and will still leave the town within its policy of 10 to 15%, which is around 12%. And then there was a decrease in the general fund transfer to the library for $441,103. Major changes in 19, in the 1920 from 1819 budget? The total budget is 61 million, it's up about 1.6 or 2.7%. The tax revenue of 1.7 million, or the 34, 0.4%. Personnel up 775,000, mostly due to contractual obligations. Capital transfer up 500,000, and on the next slide, we have a breakdown of those. School transfers up, the debt service transfer went up 594,000. That's mostly due to the 2019 road bond and the process of closing on. The OPEC transfer is down 221,000, and the library transfer again, $441,103. The capital project breakdown, you can pretty much see it up there by, for yourself, but the IT infrastructure is needed to have a more secure system, which is very important nowadays. The fire apparatus at 500,000 is the second year funding for Engine 4, which is over 20 years old. Field coat replacement, road improvements, public works, parked vehicles, that's all continuing the maintenance of our inventory. Parks and recreations up 195,000. Storm train replacement, 125,000, and other miscellaneous projects at 133,000. The last four are capital projects for our enterprise funds. This is just a visual representation of the capital projects over the several years in the history for the capital funding. Next. And the impact on the taxes, as I've said previously, the proposed tax for the residential property is $10,029 per thousand, and the commercial rate is proposed at $14,40. The fiscal year 1819 rates are $9,095 and $13,93 per thousand. The tax levy increases of $1,858,283, which represents about 3.6% over the current year. And then what's next is the adoption of the town council budget by ordinance, which is scheduled for May 20th and the second hearing for June 30th. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Nice job.
All right, so is there any comment from the council regarding the budget?
Yeah, I've got some comments. So, just for everyone in the crowd, there's multiple library items on the agenda tonight. This is the one that deals with the budget cuts. We have another item later to maintain the maintenance of effort, but this is the item that is important, which actually affects the budget. So, just want to make sure that's clear for anyone kind of scheduling their evening. So we had the workshop last week. I do have some questions for you, do you mind if I just call you back? Was it last week, budget work workshop? I think it was last week. So it's three nights, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. The way that it works is the town council president sits with the finance department and kind of has some meetings in anticipation of a workshop. The finance department also puts together their recommended budget and works with the president to kind of schedule those workshops and to set up an agenda, basically, for those workshop minutes. We hold the workshop, we go through department by department and pretty much kind of audit their expenses, discuss with them their expenditures, their revenue, their balance, and then in the third night, make a decision on if we're going to approve that budget or if we're going to make any changes to it. And then after that, we have the public hearing. That's where the official vote happens. So that's tonight, and also it's going to be on the 20th and the 3rd. In these meetings, I guess I could say they were a little bit shocking. The library has not had their budget increased in four years, other departments have. So all that was being requested was basically a level funding of the last four years. So really, they're kind of actually losing money every year because you have inflation, they're not requesting additional. It seemed kind of like an obvious choice to just approve that budget and not have a number increase. That clearly did not happen. It was cut by more than half, from 841, 841,000 to 400,000. One of the reasons for that cut given by Councilor, Councilor Lima was that families are on the edge here in Narragansett and they can't afford, you know, to fund the library in that way, and also that it would be socialism to level fund the library. So, why? Why, it's a lie.
Let's just, let's try to keep the personal itself out of it. I know they play well to the crowd, Jesse, but let's keep the personal itself out of it.
I'm stating, I'm stating.
Excuse me, Jesse. A little decorum from you would be nice, too.
I think, like I said, originally we thought it's socialism to fund the library at a level, a level funding. It's on video and you can see it on social media, it's not a lie. So no, I didn't do that if you like. Matt Mannix spoke to a local province and said, I'm looking out for all the residents, all the Narragansett taxpayers, not just the loudest ones. So we can evaluate how this cut helps the taxpayers in Narragansett. Let's take a look at the numbers here. By cutting $441,000 from the budget, 266,000 were then transferred over to Parks and Rec and to a few other departments. Behind that left, 188,000 from that 441,000 cut. Matt, Joe, and Ricky decided to split that 188 and put $94,000 back as a budget cut. So you're basically saving taxpayers $94,000 for the year. For every $50,000 in the budget, it costs the taxpayers one penny per thousand in their taxes. So, $94,000 were a little less than two cents per thousand. For a family that owns a $500,000 house in Narragansett, which is unfortunately kind of the average here, that's $10 per year in your taxes. If your house is 400,000, you're saving eight dollars a year, a year. So, less than a dollar a month, 75 cents a month. So these, this cut to the library is saving homeowners, the average homeowner, 75 cents a month. So that's the, that's the tax savings that these councilors are worried about. What it's also going to do is take Narragansett out of the library network in the state so that as a library user in Narragansett with a card, you will not be able to request books from other libraries in the state. You'll only be able to use books at this library. So that's another effect. I think, I'm happy to spend 75 cents a month to have that service. Thank you. I just have a couple of questions for you. Chris, sorry. Thank you. I just wanted to verify a couple of things with you for the numbers. It's my first budget session, so I just want to make sure I'm reading all the line items correctly. I'm looking at page 120 from the audit from last year, and, okay, that's fine. Okay, sorry, go ahead. Great. So I know that the reason given for this, for this cut was that the library has its fund reserve, and why would we leave a fund reserve sitting there? So of course it should be cut, that's the reason being given. I was looking at other departments and the town's committee, which I... I was looking at other departments and the Towers Committee, which I support, just trying to be, you know, consistent here, has a unreserved fund balance of 399,36 dollars, is that right?
That is, in the audit statement, as of June 30th, 2018, correct.
Okay, all right. So that's kind of similar reserves of library in terms of the characteristic of that money. It sits in a reserve. That was not brought up at the end of the budget workshop as something that was considered as should be cut. And then I was looking at the board for the Towers and Matt Mannix and Ricky Lima are the liaisons from the town council for the Towers Committee. When you, you were in the meeting when you put together the agenda for the budget workshop, right, you, Laura, Matt?
For the agenda for the budget workshop?
Yeah, and how the three nights are going to go, the order of the departments.
No, I did not.
You weren't in that, okay. All right.
Neither one of us was.
The president of the board, that's actually my executive assistant, sent out a notice to all department heads asking people to press for people. We haven't figured out that.
Okay, thank you. So the last day of the meeting, we kind of wrap it up. Thanks, Chris, I just wanted to confirm that, that reserve there. The last day of the meeting, we wrap it all up and we discussed what departments can be cut. Very small conversation here. The only things that were brought up were the school and the library. Even though the Towers has a huge reserve, that wasn't brought up. So it's just interesting how we sit there as a council in this workshop and then the last 10 minutes of the meeting, that just pops into the agenda as what is up for discussion. No other departments, just the, it was a decision that I was informed that was going to be had, just kind of coordinated in that way. So that's kind of, I guess what I'm trying to say is, this is the way that these workshops work. It's very opaque. It's really orchestrated by one person on the council.
Jesse, that's just not true. I've served for seven years, for six or seven budgets, the whole budget work session is the most transparent part of the process. That's where every department comes forward and shares what they justify their budget. To describe that as some closed process is, that's, a lot of people don't attend them. That's fair to say. I've always said people should attend the budget workshops. I know people have heard me say it from the dais, it's the most important part of our job, but I don't know. So they, I mean, we go through the line items, we go through all the different, the difference between enterprise fund and a department, we go through all those things. And that's one of the reasons with the Towers Committee, that's an enterprise fund, it brings money in and that money is paid, those salaries are paid out of that, it's not an allocation on the taxpayers, there's no allocation, so it's very misleading to say, oh, that should go back to taxpayers because it never came from there. There is an allocation that's gone to the library and there's an allocation and they have kept that surplus in a 686,000 dollar surplus.
So we don't give the Towers Committee a $50,000 capital over?
The last three years, we have not.
But is it, they have said no to it, but that is something that we are scheduled to do, correct?
We can do it and we did it.
And every year, they say they want to move that one.
And then we have a discussion about that.
Yeah, so that is something.
It's pretty very open, actually, it's an extremely open discussion.
I'm not talking about the line by line of discussion, I'm talking about the planning of those three minutes. So at the end of the meeting, we have three council members who are on the exact same page on exactly how much to cut in that library budget. How does that happen?
On Tuesday night, we could have had that discussion, right? On Tuesday night was the first, well, on Tuesday night, if you recall, on Tuesday night was when the library board made it clear they didn't want to use the money of the existing site. And that's when we learned that. And we could have had that discussion there and we want some people in the council, some councils will go through, some people go through the budget work sessions and you go through each department and you make your decisions as you go along. And I've sat in those situations. I've sat in the audience before I was elected where I saw some people say, the council president at the time said, "There should be one tax increase" and then we geared toward that. In this case, it didn't seem like the council members really wanted to go through each department. So I basically, at the end, I have to do it because we have to present something here. So that's when I asked, "What are we doing for OPEC? What are we doing for the school? What are we doing for the library? Are there any capital projects that people want to add or cut?" That's, it has to be done at some point. It's either done throughout, it's been done both ways. And I've been in the room when it's been done, but, so I don't understand the problem with that. Did you not want us to, what did you want, just to rubber stamp what was there?
My question was, how was this budget cut? How are you three on the same page regarding the exact number of this budget cut? When it was never discussed before?
We weren't. I went, there was proposed, if you remember, Ricky said you could go down to 342. And then I said, "What's a num, is there a number that you would like to move forward?" And then there was a discussion about that and then we made a decision.
Okay, so the last four or five years, this has never come up as an issue where you cut the library budget in half. This year it came up and was dealt with as if it was completely expected?
There was a surplus and it's a discussion what to do with the surplus, that was, that's what the whole.
They had a surplus, right?
But there was a discussion about that before.
Yeah, that's why I'm wondering how that happened this year.
Well, during the budget, as you recall, we were asked about the surplus, what's a surplus number? It was revealed to us, actually, I remember Patty Outright saying she was surprised by that dollar amount as well, which was kind of scary, saying that they didn't really have a whole lot of finances. But I've only been on one of their previous, I'm sorry, but we've never talked about this. So this was a new thing, so I would mention that this was new to have a surplus. Towers, you mentioned the Towers, it's interesting, the Towers actually uses their money that they have to repair. Dave didn't go into it tonight, but they have a major project that they'll be repairing in the Towers building of it as an exit to make it more safe to go down on the rampway. So they'll be using that money that's in that account for that. Whereas something that's different is the surplus that we found in the library account, we had asked, you know, why had that not been used to repair the library? One thing that was uncovered also during the budget was the town council, after Super Storm Sandy, had given an allocation of $50,000 to the roof for the library and it wasn't used, it was just kept in that cavity account. So those are things that we hadn't talked about in previous budget meetings and were made aware of that last Tuesday through Thursday at the meetings.
And I think the reason for that reserve is too old. I mean, the one that I heard is that there have been plans to move the library to the Belmont Building for years. So they're putting that money in reserve to use for that new project and it would finish that still. And I think that Ricky actually asked during the meeting, why the library doesn't put money aside like other departments do as a reserve, which they clearly do.
But it's a surplus, it's not a reserve, it's a different thing.
Is it? What makes it different?
Yes, it's different because it's not a enterprise fund. It's a surplus, they haven't been using the money that's allocated to that, so there's a surplus of taxpayer dollars. So taxpayers, we, as a town, have been giving this library a certain amount of dollars out every single year, taxpayer dollar, and they haven't been using it. They've been stalling, they've been stacking it away, swirling away, whatever term you want to use. They have a very large amount of money, it's a different story, it's not enterprise fund, Jesse, they're not supposed to be doing that.
I just want to clarify that, it's a little misleading. The last, last year.
It's not misleading at all.
Okay, I'll explain how it's misleading.
Well, it's not misleading, Jesse, that's a fact.
Can I speed you up a bit, can you explain that?
Okay.
So there is a surplus. Last year, it actually went down by 22,000. Library did not have excess, they actually had a deficiency in their budget. Part of the reason for that is that the previous town council took two pensions away from library employees. So the library is putting money aside for those pensions. So they actually were negative last year, so that reserve is going down, not up. At this year, the projection is that it's going to go down another 77,000. So that's going to lower that surplus even further. So this is not being built up currently. The last year and this year, that reserve will go down and now it's going to go instantly down by 144,000 dollars. So soon they'll have no reserve and the question is, what happens at that point? If they're going over their budget and there's no reserve and no state funding, that's where there's going to be big trouble. So just really a lack of planning by this council and a lack of long-term vision to the effects that this is going to have.
I just want to say that, you know, the library board trustees, they're kind of a hybrid quasi-town, state, you know, they're a different entity, they're not an enterprise fund, they're not a town department. I mean, they kind of got their own autonomy when it comes to financing. So I commend them for having a reserve because the battle plan was, was to move to the Belmont space, refit the building, and they had a reserve for incidentals or emergencies or some kind of other contingency. So I commend them for having a reserve. Saving taxpayers.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
So let's start off with, at that same meeting, Mr. Few said, "Have you reclaimed him?" And that's on the record.
No, it's not on the record, it's not on any, not true record. It's not true, you know, it's not.
Don't answer it.
So let's start with the budget. Let's start with the budget. Budget for the library, each year is funded 1,028,597 dollars. If you look at the expenditures of the library, it's roughly about 885 dollars and rounding up. They have a fund balance of 686,443. They have a building that needs to repair. Now, excuse me, if you're going to speak out, please leave. So I'm talking, I've listened to everybody else, now listen to me, please. So they're now, they have a fund balance of 686,443. When you take that off the 1,028,597, you actually come up with 342,154. Now the argument is, the library won't have enough money to operate if they're cut. The amount of money that we were willing to, and it was only a proposal, to give them was 400,000 on the 686 that they already have, which would give them 1,086,443 dollars to operate the library. Now you're out there telling us, "You can't operate the library on 1,086 because you don't want to use the fund balance." So let's say the library chooses to go somewhere else. Do the taxpayers really want to be responsible for fixing up a building that they already gave money in a budget that should have been fixed? I just don't get that. I would not want to be in that situation. No one I'd put anybody in that situation. So let me continue on with this. 885,000 to run the library and 1,086 isn't enough to do it? If you subtract the numbers, there's plenty there and in 2019 in December, I believe, they will get their state funding, which is 187,492 dollars. They will receive that. Excuse me, it's the following year, I believe, you don't get it. 2020, you don't get it, it's December. Let me finish.
Nope, he did.
Excuse me.
Let's keep the number going.
So there are two options here. We need to fix the building. We need to bring it up to date. It's going to cost extra $100,000 to do that. You want your 841 so that you can get state funding? All right, I'm not going to disagree with that. But out of the fund balance, we're going to need the money to fix that building up to date because that's what it was there for. Library is supposed to maintain that building. So you want 841, 103? I have no problem with that. I'm going to need 600,000 to put into that building and bring it up to where it needs to be. Still getting your state funding and we get the money to be able to bring that building, which is a town building, taxpayer money, budgeted year after year to keep that building where it is. There's your alternative.
So the council, we're going to see if there's members of the public padding and then the council comes back to the council.
Thank you. I just wanted to answer a couple of questions that have been going around about the budget. Number one, Jill, I did say we were surprised how much was there. I spoke with the finance director in January, when we met with her to discuss budgets, we were told we had 500,000 dollars, not the 700,000. So we're not really clear as to where all that money came from between January and now. We have put money aside for the building that we thought we were buying and that we thought we would be repairing and that's why there's money, as you call a surplus. It's not a surplus, that money was put aside to use for that purpose. The other thing, as we have said before, is the pensions. We have budgeted for the people that we hired to fill the children's librarian and the reference position, which have always been given pensions for as long as I've been there. And then they would decide not to give them back when we hired new people. So that money, again, has been budgeted over the past few years to, in hopes that we would come up with a solution for that. So that pension money really, in our eyes, cannot be spent because that is put aside for the solution of offering our full-time and molested librarians a pension. The other thing is, is that, yes, today we're not a department, but tomorrow we are a department. That keeps floating around back and forth. The state has us designated as a separate entity that the board operates and the money comes from the town and it's up to us how to spend it, I should say, up to the board how to spend it. And I do put my input into preparing that budget. And we do our best to spend what we can, but as, like everything else, I budget for heat and we don't use all that money. I budget for extra people in case I need it over the summer. If I don't need those extra people, that money doesn't get used. So again, it's not an irresponsible budget that we've done over the years. It's something that we've planned, but getting away from it from the finance director, again, is sometimes a challenge. The other thing I want to ask is about the school department. That's a separate budget. They have a surplus, as you call it, but you didn't ask them to use that for their operating budget. They have used it before for the athletic, you know, the athletic field, I'm sorry, I'm nervous. But you have asked them to use that for the athletic field, but not for operating. Operating is very important and we do service over 10,000 people a month at that library and every penny we spend goes to something valuable for the community. So I'm just asking you to please look at this budget and to reestablish the full funding. Thank you.
So if we funded the library 300,000 with the 686, that would give them 1,086. It would be more than what the budget was last year. If you, yes, it would.
If the numbers don't lie, I know you can send messages, the numbers don't lie. And if so, it's not.
Last year, we're funded 1,028,597. 400,000 on the 686 brings you to 1,086,443. It's a little bit of a difference, okay? If you take the operating expense of the library, last year, 884, let's call it 885, and we give you the 1,086,443. and we give you the $1,086,443, you'll actually have an extra $201,000.
And is there anyone from the public? David.
I believe the numbers that you're telling me are correct, but I'm a little bit confused by this. Mr. Lima said, "No, we won't lose the state funding this year of $180,000. We'll lose it next year." Now, I am not an accountant, but when I hear $180,000 on an additional $400,000, a $400,000 allocation, I want to know where I can put that money because I have $400,000 that, if in one year I can get $180,000, I'd be glad to do that. So, are you prepared to take the hit next year and then have to make up even more? It makes no sense to me from a fiscal standpoint. I understand that it's been a surplus or reserve, I don't care what you call it. One, before I was here, for the past 10 years, the town councils have been asking the library to jump through hoops to look at building or moving the library or renovating the current library. It's prudently responsible to have a reserve for that kind of work and not have to come to the town in the middle of a building project to throw in an additional $50,000 or $100,000 when you discover something is not working. But I don't understand what you think is going to happen next year when another $181,000 doesn't show up, when we could have gotten that money from the state. I just saw you approve $100,000 for the Black Grant. This makes sense. That $180,000 from the state is free money. To throw it away is fiscally irresponsible, and I can't believe the town council is that fiscally responsible.
So, again, it seems the logic would be for us to fund you the 841, right? And then you get your reimbursement of $187,000? And in the process, we bring that building that you're in now up to date? If it's too, it's too small based on whatever plan is written for a library, if the library choose to be there. And that's the truth. It's based on a plan that is written out by the library board.
This is a pocket.
Hold on, excuse me. It's based on a plan. If you want to get OLS down here, that's what they will tell you, okay? The other factor in here is, is this. If we choose to do something with that building, who's going to pay to repair it? You think the new tenants coming in are going to repair that building? No, taxpayers are. Come on, Patrick, nobody's going in there to repair that building.
If a commercial, if a commercial entity goes in there, they'll probably refit the whole building to the city. We'd probably have to give them some kind of, you know, free lease for like six months or something. That's usually the way it works.
Well, you're crazy if you think that's going to happen to us.
We're going to come back to the council, but we're going to talk about the public's way in on the budget. So, Dr. Alba.
Thank you, Alba, 24 Eagles, Ness Terrace, Rhode Island. I think we have to sit back and look at what's been stated. We have a library board, which already stated that the existing building is not adequate. We have an engineer, licensed engineer, with an outstanding report saying the existing board, existing, existing building is not adequate. So, to put money on something which has already been deemed inadequate, to me, you consider that, as I stated, wasting that money instead of keeping that money in reserve and using it for, hopefully, a new building. Also, I was really hopeful when I heard about comments about people not being willing to, the people who are needy not being willing to be able to spend the extra money because of a tax increase. As we know, the tax is a progressive tax. A tax on real estate is progressive. So, people on small houses, their real estate tax will be hit that much less. Also, when you go to a library, who can get the greatest benefits from a library? Those who are needy. Those who cannot buy a laptop, computer, or buy a car. Or the $28,000, $28,000 of, when you're buying popcorn and everything else. I actually went to the Tipton Library. I have a video, I'll gladly show you the video, the tour to the Tipton Library, and show you the beauty that's in that library, and show you how we can make good use of the entire new building.
Mr. Metcalfe, comment, please.
So, I would gladly send that video to all of you, and I think it'll be an eye-opener where we'd be able to use all the rooms, even the upstairs, and we'll be able to benefit everyone. And also, like I said, I think to make a comment saying that the needy won't be able to be able to spend, afford the increase in taxes is just incomprehensible to me because the benefits are going to far outweigh any additional cost the needy are going to be having to pay for an increase in taxes. Thank you.
Nancy LaPosta-Frazier, 71 West Bay. I watched the video of last week's budget meeting several times, and I was struck by the lack of any discussion focusing on the repercussions of such a drastic cut to the library's funding. I saw some adding and subtracting of numbers, some name-calling initiated by Mr. Lima, and then a vote. In the vindictive rush to obtain a pound of flesh from the employees of the library and their supporters in the community, you didn't give any thought to the collateral damage that you are creating. With this cut in funding, shut-ins won't be able to download eBooks. The elderly will be forced to travel to the library during the winter instead of browsing the e-catalog in the comfort of their homes. The rest of us will be denied access to the intrastate library lending system that exists in Rhode Island. This means that the citizens of Narragansett will have to stand in line to borrow the one or two copies of popular or timely books housed in our own library, translating into potential wait times of a year or more. Now, you may argue that we could utilize neighboring libraries. I think you mentioned that, Mr. Lima. But what good is that in light of the fact that our library cards will only be valid in Narragansett? Why are you casting us into the role of core relations, relying on the kindness of strangers? Do you really think that neighboring towns are going to greet us with open arms when we won't allow them to buy beach passes? At the end of the video, an agreement was made to decrease the tax rate by two cents. That would be laughable, but wasn't so pathetic and insulting. Do you really think that you can buy off the residents of Narragansett for pennies? I can't answer for anyone else, but you most certainly can't buy my integrity for pennies. In this bag are the pennies you want me to keep, but I don't accept your blood money. Do I have permission to give you back those pennies? May I approach?
You can give it to DeClaire.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? So, let's see if there's other people on the talk.
Rachel Smith-Coneyer, 5 Judith Ave. I'm here to, I guess, represent the needy people that you are making assumptions about. I'm not needy anymore, but when I left my abusive husband 10 years ago with my two children, one of them already spoke on how important the library had been to us, and the other one was sitting right there, I didn't have money to do anything. But I bundled my kids into our double stroller, and we walked the library all the time, year round, and we drank drinks together, and they played with the puppets and the trains. It was a very special place to us. It was where we went. And then, when, before their father abandoned them for good, I had their supervisor's visitations there, court ordered, because it was the one and only safe place in this community that was public that we could do that type of thing in. Every community needs someplace like this that's safe for the people, for the children, for the single mothers, for the disabled people who go there. I've heard stories from people whose children go there five days a week. I've been there with my kids, I know the faces, we still go there. There are people that this is their place, this is their safe place, and a library is the cornerstone to every healthy community. You can't have one without it. So, I'll be here. People who aren't here right now, who you're making assumptions about where we want to spend our tax money, this is where I want to spend my tax money.
No, I recognize the man in green.
Dr. Robert Ireland, 70 East Street, Narragansett. I don't understand why you would take any steps that could potentially jeopardize this building. This town is the busiest, one of the busiest libraries in the state. Why would you do anything that would jeopardize my access to eBooks, my access to interlibrary loan, which I do all the time? Why would you take something that's a family-friendly place in what's supposed to be a family-friendly town and destroy it? That is my question to you.
It doesn't jeopardize the building. As you've gone through the numbers, again, the numbers don't lie. Last year, it was 841, 180 from the state, $841,000 with 180,000 from the state, $180,000 from the state. This year, there's a surplus of 686, and then our allocation is 400. That's a larger number. So, nothing is being jeopardized. The surplus in every town cab, if every town department carried this kind of surplus, and the Towers is not a town department, if police, fire, community development carried these kind of surpluses, we would be, it would, we would have huge tax increases. We'd be, it would be very bad from a fiscal standpoint. And this whole thing about the transferability of the, of the books and the claim cards, which we've all taken advantage of. If you can't get a book, you go to Peasdale because they may have it. We've all done that. The 180 that we're not taking, it would be, it would be strange for all of us to turn around and then say, "We're not giving you the 180, but yeah, we're going to..." Talk about vindictive, "We're going to then not let you be part of the claim card sharing program." So, that would be, yes, they have the power to do that, but that would be a huge abuse of power, and I would speak out against it.
We just heard Matt say that the library is a town department. It's on the record that when the, when the board works on giving them pensions back, they can use that.
Because that's what it's all about, isn't it? It's not about governing. It's not about, I wonder what you know that. Everyone at home, this is not about governing with these people. This is, you put out one line, and then you attack. That's what happens, and that's what goes on. That's why you wanted the work sessions taped, but you selectively put out pieces from the work session. Nobody's talked about the Tuesday night where the library board was in transition. No one's had that conversation. So, I want everyone to be clear about what's going on, and that is, and that's what it's about. It's about a gutsy game of politics, and it's changed since I first started. It's sad to watch, actually. It's really sad.
Again, Mal Bolinberg, 25 Year Old Score. Like, there was a gentleman up here who said he was an accountant, was not an accountant. I am. And one thing I learned a long time ago is that you can, as opposed to what Mr. Lima said, you can't make numbers lie. He states, he states that with the reduced funding and using the surplus of reserve, or whatever you want to call it, that you'll have more money than the, you know, than you would have in the prior year. And that may very well be good, but that $600,000 will be gone if his condition is that we should, you know, allocate the full amount and take that reserve and put it into refurbishing the old building, which has been deemed to be, you know, unusable for a library. It's like putting a, you know, you put lipstick on a pig, it's still a pig. And that's what you have there for a building. I think what we have here is, we have the proverbial cock in front of the horse. I think if we go, if we go back to, what I said before about letting the architects come into the building, see what we have, and at that point, the council making the decision as far as what we should do going forward, this may very well be a subject for next year, but not this year. Thank you.
Patty, I'd like to see if anyone who's listening, that would be your second time on, so can we...
I just wanted to explain how the funding works because it seems like that's something that people are asking about, the state funding, when it takes effect, how we get it, that kind of thing.
From the statute, yes. We'll have Mark go through that, from the state statute.
I was going to explain from how the library has to apply for that.
And they'll usually do it in the form...
September 15th, we submit it, and then it's approved, and it's for the current year, fiscal '20, and we get it in, two quarters come all at once, and then we get a third and fourth order payment throughout the year. But it's, OLS is, OLS pays for the delivery system of the books. However, OSL is one of the consortium that has policies also. I did fax or email to Sean OSL's policy, which simply states that if we can't meet minimum standards, which would be hard with a lower budget, then we would lose services from OSL, meaning we can't borrow books from the library, therefore, no delivery service. That's how I was explained by those people.
Thank you.
And I was going to ask if you wanted to hear this, but I assumed you wanted to. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Jessica Wilson. I live at 20 Chuckerberry Trail in Narragansett. I'm a Narragansett resident, but I'm a librarian in another town, and my library career has been based in intra-library loan. So, I understand the importance of the library delivery service, the fact that everybody in the state shares books. It's like we're one big library. We all share resources, and not only with public libraries, but we have access to resources of academic and hospital libraries as well. I would just hate to see my own town cut that ability for so many people with your used library. Narragansett is one of the most used libraries in the town, not only for circulation of books, eBooks, but the Narragansett Library does a fantastic amount of programming, and those programs are well-attended by members of the Narragansett community, and people from other towns come to them as well. So, I would also draw your attention to a letter that was published in the Providence Journal on May 3rd by a librarian from West Warwick, which went through this, this exact same process a few years ago. The town council in West Warwick cut funding for that public library. I'm sorry, my voice is so tremulous. But her letter said, among other things, anything that results in less-than-level funding will trigger a complete loss of state funding. will trigger a complete loss of state funding for the library." And the result, a loss of state funding in West Warwick, resulted in a sharp decrease in hours of operation, reduced ability to purchase materials, limited program offerings, and loss of jobs. I also would like to say, I believe that library workers deserve a pension as much as other town workers. And I would like to commend my colleague Patty Harbright and all the librarians in Narragansett for the fine job that they do. And to quote from this letter, and Anesta in West Warwick says, "I hope that Narragansett Town Council members will learn from another town's foolhardy mistake. So I please ask you to consider refunding, re-establishing this amount to the library." Thank you.
Hi, my name is Paula Chambers, and I live at 40 Lambert Street. And I'm new to this, but I've been, you know, going to the library since I first moved to Narragansett forty years ago. And I have been proud of my library. And I'm just up here because I honestly don't understand why you're trying, it seems like you don't want to keep a library that we can be proud of, that educates people, that reaches out to people who don't have resources. We go to the library, senior citizen in my mid-seventies. I go to the library because I can't afford to buy books that I read. I read a lot. And I also know, I've been with numbers for a long time. I was a math major. I have a master's in math. I know about numbers. We've always said, "You can make the numbers say anything you want." I know it. I've done it to show people. And Mr. Lima, I don't understand. You're saying you're gonna give them...
Is your question?
I'm sorry. Oh, okay. I just, I don't understand when Mr. Lima said, somehow you're gonna be giving a million-something dollars to the library? And is that adding in that whatever was in that reserve, surplus, whatever you wanna call it? So you're not really giving that money. You're asking them to use the money that they have saved for pensions, that they have saved for trying to keep the library functioning in a good way. I don't get it. I honestly am truly confused. I saw this in the paper a while back, and I said, "This is all gonna change. You don't need to get involved in this." And I can't believe it continues to go on. I am ashamed of Narragansett. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Catherine Sellebrot, 48-year-old school. We're still talking about the library. Can we talk about all the parts of the budget also?
You can talk about the whole, anything in the budget. It's a public hearing on the budget.
First, Jesse, thank you for standing with the stop-and-shot workers. But I'm...
Shannon, keep the comments to me.
I'm sorry. I might even go with that. I didn't even do that. In any event, the whole budget has ballooned. You know, we're talking about some serious increases. And the school department is one of those departments that has shown some increases. They have a program for three-year-olds and four-year-olds. It's a pre, I don't know, preschool education program. Marco Jones about it. But when I heard about it, I was told that it was gonna be directed toward the low-income children in town and those who had special education needs. But this program has morphed into something completely different. There's a lot of kids in this program whose parents can be well-afford, regular, I don't wanna say daycare, Dr. Cummings doesn't like that word, but other programs where they would get pre, you know, pre-school education, that type of thing. And I know that you agreed to add ten positions to that program from fifty to sixty, but Dr. Cummings told me that they're gonna go up to ninety positions. They, I'm not sure where they're finding the money, but that they've decided to accommodate everyone on their waiting list. Now, he's at a, some kind of thing today, and I wanna know where this money's gonna come from. Because right now, even with those fifty kids, we're talking about a serious deficit this program is running, because they're charging a very low price. And they're putting seniors out of business and other early education programs. I was like, I guess you call it programs. And I, if it's, if it's for low-income kids in town, and we certainly have enough of them, or if it's for children that do these special education services that I'm all for, and I mean for free, they shouldn't be charging anything. But this is not what's happening. We have, like, all these kids in the school, a lot of kids, and it's just turned into something different. But like I said, they're gonna go up to ninety kids, and I don't know where they're gonna get that money. It's, and here's what, here's something else. I looked at the school department budget, and there's nothing in there about a resource officer for the elementary school. That elementary school's gonna have a public bike path running behind it. We need a full-time resource officer for the elementary school. And I don't see it in the, in the school department budget. And I think rather than find money for ninety kids, they've gotta, they've gotta do something about this. I just don't think it's safe for those kids to go to that school. Little kids, now we're talking about three- and four-year-olds that are in this school, where the public bike path's running in the back of it. So I think the school department might just make a little bit of an adjustment. I would hope that, you know, you talk to them about it and see what can work out.
Thank you, Catherine. I was Dan, and then Matt.
Stan, working house in Narragansett. I attended those work sessions. And I listened to some very professional department heads speak about their budget. And I was impressed. I think that they, I couldn't discover any errors in their plans, or serious errors. And therefore, I don't think that we need to have serious surpluses in all these departments. And I know, with all respect to the finance department, I know that they wanna make sure that they got things covered. So they're gonna maximize the surplus as possible, so we're not gonna jam. And I also heard that we are looking at a twelve percent surplus, and I thought that there was a ten percent minimum that was quoted by finance. So I really wanna push to get to that ten percent. Let's get closer to ten percent, only because we have a staff that's so good. They're not gonna make mistakes. It's gonna cost us money. So right now, my thing is, we can cut two percent off our budget just by dealing with the surpluses. And I wanna thank you for bringing up about surpluses. That made me think about surpluses. That's a serious error that we don't need to have here. I suggest that you go back to every department head and ask them to cut their surplus by two percent. And then tell me, or tell us, what we will lose if they lose their two percent. Let's see some serious problem there. If there's no serious problem, I wanna see another two percent reduction in our budget. Fiscal responsibility. And this is kind of the first time that I've heard the council get really serious about the taxpayer covering their, covering expenses. Everybody talks about it, but I can see there's some serious, serious discussions about taxpayers and taxpayer dollars. And I just wanna focus on a big amount, which is the surplus. And we can deal with the library as time goes on. Again, just like I remember, the Towers used to always get fifty thousand dollars. "Oh, they always asked for fifty thousand, fifty thousand. We always gave it to them." Well, now they got a four-hundred-thousand-dollar surplus, so they were kind enough not to go and ask us for surplus. We didn't have to give them the fifty thousand. And that's kind of almost where this library is. They got a surplus there and they're still asking for money. I mean, if they're really in trouble for money later on, I'm sure you will take money out of your surplus to cover their issue if they have a serious issue. If they have a serious issue now, I'm sure that's what surpluses are for. But do we have to cover it ahead of time? I'm not so sure. I wanna know the details first. Thank you.
Thank you, Stan.
Thank you, Matthew. Since I have to address myself to you, first off, I just wanna thank Councilman Pugh for trying to dig away and ferret out the truth there about how this cut came about. Because I want my friends in the audience to be perfectly aware that... And this is why we're all here. I mean, they teach me this. We're all here because we know this is punitive and preordained. We know it's premeditated. And the reason we know that is that, as I understand it, Mr. Lima asked for a meeting with the OLS people back in December of 2018. And I believe Ms. Lawler was present at that meeting, and I believe he asked, in 2018, "What happens if we were to cut the library budget?" So that's, that happened. So it was premeditated and preordained. And just in the midst of this, I wanna leave you with the words of Bill Gates' father, who, you know, the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation have donated millions upon millions of dollars to small-town libraries because they believe in them so greatly. And in an address he gave, he encouraged people in local governance to, "In the midst of their budget debates, our government officials need to know that there is no place where the public gets more for its money than at the public library. Where else can the purchase of one book give a hundred people a chance to read that book? Where else can the purchase of six computers offer six hundred people of all ages a chance to use a computer? Please, please, don't do this." Thank you.
This is a budget hearing, so my comments may seem a little misplaced. But I am a budgetary member. My name is Michael Sylvia. I am a twenty-year resident of South Keystown. And let me say this. Today, in this day, on this day, I have been at Middletown Public Library, Newport Public Library, and Narragansett Public Library. And Narragansett is the jewel and the crown of this town. And it's one of the best libraries in the state for the size of this huge mansion. And you people, all right, all right, I'm gonna finish real quick. This year's a pass with forty bucks to go in Donnis Duke's house. Forty bucks to adults. I go to that Newport Public Library. I can keep it for a week, okay? This is a small token of the services available in the public library for people that can't afford. And Narragansett has things that the big libraries don't provide. You people, come to South Keystown and see. Narragansett is a special place, and the library needs to remain a special place. And it's very short-sighted historically. Double the budget. Double it. Don't cut it. All those people and poor people, that you don't ask a person's name in the public library. They come in the door. This is America. You see that flag? Okay, all right. I said enough.
I'm Mary Ann Cron, the eighty-two Harbor Island Road. And I spoke to a friend who worked for the State Department of Library Services. And it does sound like not only do you lose the state's financial support if the town shows a lack of support for their own library, but you also lose the services they provide. And I think Narragansett Library would be really handicapped if we try to go on ourselves without plan and the services that the state library supports. I think it would be a very bad way to save money. Thank you.
Mary Nato, 10 Second Street, Narragansett. I just have an overall budget question. I know the library's budget was caught in proposed budget, but whether departments were caught?
We went through that with the finance director. She showed, she showed the summary of that.
I don't think it was any other cuts. And I know other departments have reserves, like the school department, and theirs weren't taken away. So I, it does seem like the library was a subject of punitive cuts in budget.
Yeah, but that's, we got that message from you, but it wasn't.
Thank you. If they could publish a percentage reduction on the budget for all the departments, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
So as people wanna talk about the budget, all the departments in the town, before they even come to budget hearings with the council, sit with the town manager. And he sits with each individual department and makes cuts before they even get to us. And if you look at the history of this town, all the other departments take cuts. Some years it's over a million dollars. I can tell you in the DPW department that if they brought everything to the table, it would be a substantial number. So they choose, a lot of times, not to keep repeating the four-hundred-thousand dollars in road maintenance that they're not getting. Seven-hundred-and-fifty was recommended to be allocated, but they're only getting three-hundred-and-fifty of it. That's been going on for six years. So they're two-point-four-million behind the eight ball on that. When the buses went over to DPW, a proposed building was to be put up as being able to shelter the equipment that this town owns. And during the months of when the weather was bad, if they had to go in and work on a vehicle that they could work on quickly, they would be able to do it under a covering. That building never got to the front door. That was a quarter of a million dollars. So the equipment now sits outside because the buses are in the building. And that's fine, because we do need to work on our buses. So as we sit here and talk about cuts, every department takes cuts before they even get to us. And over the course of the last four, five, six years, millions of dollars each year are cut from all the other departments. We talked tonight about the library having cuts. I don't choose to cut it. I'll give you an eight forty-one. Help us out a little bit with refurbishing the building that is there.
We didn't vote?
Help us with it, okay? That's all we're asking. Just give us a little bit of help. Not gonna go back to the taxpayer and ask them for more money to put a roof or bring that building up to code, where it needs to be, to today's standards. That's all we're asking. I'm asking. Thank you.
The town manager did not recommend cuts to the library, so I'm not really sure of this line of comment.
I didn't mention it, did I?
Did everybody want to?
Yes, every department except for the library's been cutting the last year. All the departments added up as over a million bucks. And mine has never been cut in the last ten years.
And it wasn't recommended?
Ever, okay?
And it was recommended?
So the town manager only makes cuts to town departments. That's why, Jesse?
Yeah, Matt said this is a town department, right?
It's not a town department. So listen to some town.
That's what he said. Yeah, I got it. And I do believe the town residents already approved a bond for a new library. So yeah, if you're asking the town taxpayers to pay for a new library, it just doesn't make any sense.
Thank you.
It was our, we had a vote. They approved five-point-eight. What?
Where's your vote? Vote on, what'd you vote on? You keep mentioning sixty-seven percent of the people voted for a bond.
A bond, yep.
Not the building, the building.
Okay.
So there's twelve thousand, five-hundred-and-fifty-seven voters. So you're discounting the other seventy-two thousand people. So you're discounting the other 72,000 people. That's how it works. It didn't vote, that's how it works. If you don't really care about them.
If you don't vote yet, if you don't really care. We go by the percentage.
That's interesting. That's really interesting that you don't care about them.
In 2016, we're all aware of what happened. We've heard that line. We're very aware. We seem to ignore what happened in 2018.
What happened?
We seem to ignore that there was a whole election system, that people's opinions on the ground shifted regarding the decision. That people were sharing.
Ladies and gentlemen, please stop with the outbursts.
Because, please stop with the outbursts. Let's listen to some facts for once, please, okay? In 2018, in 2018, there was an election in which there were seven people. Four of the names were on the Belmont sign. The Democratic Town Committee campaigned heavily for three of them. It was mainly a huge political issue. I took the position that I thought the library deal was bad and this should be repealed. I said in that campaign, "I think people's opinions are shifting on this." Many people came to me and they said that their opinion had shifted on this and they were concerned. That's what elections are for. So then what happened is we had a change in the council's membership in the 2018 election. It's like we ignore that election, which happened and where opinions and arguments took place. And so then it was still a very split council, but it was not a mandate. No one came close to the 5100 vote, 5106 votes, that the bond had in 2016. No one came remotely close to that. So it was... that was what the campaign was about. And if I had lost, I would have said that the people want to go forward with what I think was a blank check for the Belmont Building. But I said, and the people didn't, reluctantly, it consisted with my prior vote. One more place to come then? You win a seat again. An at-large election is not a one-on-one election. There's people in this room with one-on-one elections. When people campaign in an at-large election, they're trying to get a seat. The fifth-place person is the same as the first-place person.
Oh!
They both get a seat. Listen, it's election fact. You can scream and yell about it and grandstand, but that's how elections... it's not a one-on-one election. You see, some people campaign and they try to get the top-five position. That's what they do. That's how an election... it's a different election than a one-on-one election, like a general election. So, but, you know, we'll go forward. I know there's more people who want to come, so please come forward.
Hi, Samuel Job, Reference and Information Services Library. In January, we held a forum at the library in which Ricky Leemah stated, "No one in this room voted for me, so I don't need to listen to any of you." So I think it's funny that he is saying, "So many people didn't vote in this election. What about that?" That's all I have to say. Thank you.
I'm Steven Bellis, 8 Baldwin Court, Naragansett. Back in January, I heard Councilman Leemah say that he was in favor of a state-of-the-art library, something similar to Timbertown, and he would have an RFP to present within two weeks. I'm still waiting for that. That hasn't happened. And now tonight, he's talking about refurbishing the old building. Okay, so that's a huge contradiction. Number two, I also have an undergraduate degree in accounting. And what's going on here in this budget is very disingenuous. I've seen it 100 times in corporate America. If you want to kill something, you cut the budget. You cut the resources. And next year, that's your new starting point. So we can see what you're doing here. You can see right through it. I just don't understand who your handlers are in this town. People. Really? I can't believe it's really...
I don't have a handle. I believe you.
I believe you do. I believe you do. People, I don't. I don't have handles. So thank you for your beliefs, but I don't. Thank you. I'm entitled to my beliefs in my throat. Anyway, there's a lot of people in this town that have come across that don't want... that some of them are against the library. They're not even residents here. They're out of state. They own properties here. Maybe there's someone from Naples, or there's someone from Sedona, or some other place in Florida or California. They don't live here, Albury. I do. Okay? People voted on this. We want a library. It's time for you guys to vote.
Carleen Town, Woodhill Road. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but I just have one comment to make. We hear that Mr. Mannix, a lot of people come to you and say they're against the library. They don't think it's physically responsible.
Not against the library. Don't mischaracterize it. Against this very expensive project. Right? I very much love the library.
Do you not think that refurbishing a building that is unrefurbishable, to make it a state-of-the-art library, wouldn't be more expensive? But my point is, you keep talking about assignment majority. And I want to know where they are because it is the local majority who is here all the time. And if you have so many people who are against the library moving to the Belmont Building, I think maybe they should stand up and tell you, just as all of these fans are standing up and telling you what they do want.
Good evening. Matt Lilo, 43 Second Drive. I have a different topic that's been the popular one for tonight. Parks and Recreation, if I remember, had an increase of $195,000. That's correct, to the budget? Somewhere around there.
Somewhere around there.
Okay. So a couple of years ago, I was in motorcycle accident, broke my back. And I was born and raised in South County. Beaches are part of our culture. We have some of the most beautiful beaches in the country, maybe in the world. And I really do miss going there. So I've looked up a few things. And I've heard the past. The Naragansett Town Beach had some sort of a carpet pathway they were able to roll out from the pavement, from where that ends, to the beach. So you can get through that thick, heavy sand. Is that something the town was planning on doing this year? Do you know?
I did not see that specifically in the budget. But now, just guys.
So I've been a little researching. They're only a couple thousand dollars. If the budget is significantly larger this year, I was really hoping that for myself, other people with disabilities, older folks, mothers, kids, strollers, really anybody, this benefits everybody. You know, people really take it for granted. You have a couple free hours. You can just stroll down to the beach, catch a little sun. It's awesome. For myself, I'd have to call a few friends, really orchestrate a show, just to go get a little bit of sunlight. So I really was hoping that the town, the council, Parks and Recs, whoever the powers may be, could take into consideration this year doing something like that. So myself, and like I said, everybody else, can enjoy the beautiful beaches we have because I really miss them. Thank you.
Sweet, right? Could you respond to that? Because I do... you have an answer.
Yes, good evening. We have... that's Pathman, and we use it every year. We've been using it for the last five years. It's at the South Pavilion and North Pavilion.
Thank you. Does anyone need to do anything special in order to use that? Or how does it work?
No, it's available at both pavilions. We also have beach chairs with super tires on it, so they'll be able to go right into the water. So we have both ADA access at both pavilions.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Tom Heinz, 14 Blaven Clover Drive. Can we get the graphic backup that showed the chart for the funding for the library?
Glad somebody's paying attention.
Yes. Perhaps you can interpret this for me. My understanding of listening to this conversation was that the way that the library's going to be dealt with was going to be to take its surplus and combine it with the $400,000 and have it give them an amount of money somewhere over a million to operate. But I noticed that that line, the flat line, all the way out to the budget year's out. And once the surplus is gone, how the hell is the library...
This is not my chart. This is not the town's chart.
Not the town's chart.
This is something I put... An individual person.
All right, council.
Councilman, individual councilman. I think I got it right.
So the expectation would be that somehow, with the surplus gone in the next year out, in order to create that budget at the proper level to operate the library, that money's going to have to come from somewhere anyway. So that's not right.
Let me just go over this and explain it, and then we'll get into the rest.
It's not taking any of my time, as you explain.
Go ahead and finish.
Well, I got to actually just want another point of clarification because before, I think I saw that we're going to... we, the town, are going to do something on the order of 5 or 600... 5 or 675,000 on Cabanas, right?
Give them the budget.
How many Cabanas do we have?
Now, it's 80. Steve, 88? It's in the high 80s.
All right, in the high 80s. So that's going to benefit 80 families, in essence? From putting that kind of money into the budget to benefit the 80 families who will win the lottery on whatever it is that gets you into taking a Cabana? As opposed to 10,000 people a month coming to the library?
But remember, it's an enterprise fund. So the things are important again, right? So the money does not come from the taxpayers. It comes from the beach fees because it's an enterprise fund.
No, that 675,000 that was in here is not... it's not part of the budget.
It's an enterprise fund in which the money comes from the beach.
Absolutely, yeah.
Tank, man.
I know you don't want to give the... People should go to the work sessions on the budget because then we talk about the difference between an enterprise fund and a department. But...
I'm not as dumb as you.
I'm not saying you're dumb.
I understand, but I don't like being talked down to.
I don't like the...
The issue is, in the budget, notwithstanding whether it's an enterprise fund or not, this council decided that $675,000 should be allocated to the benefit of about 90 families, no matter where the money came from. So my last point would be this. There's been a lot of interpretation of the election that occurred in 2018. And rather than intuit what it all meant, why did you put out a referendum to the people? So they have an opportunity to work and ratify the reasons for the change. Thank you.
We did try that a few days ago.
I guess it's a good time to explain this chart, yeah? Put this together, it was in my... And it's color-coded. It looks kind of confusing, but this... stay with me. The green, that's the current maintenance effort that the town pays for the library. It's 841. It looked to me they were asking for another 10,000. And it would continue. The town proposal that was brought up the other night drops in 2018, we're at the 841. And then it drops to that 400 number. And then that flat lines. Now, the state funding is the yellow line on the bottom, which is 181 for 2018. This year will be 181. But in 2020, 2020 is a down year. That would get zero from the state because of this action of not level funding, okay? So we need to stop level funding. The second year, they drop all funding from the state, okay? So, and then it continues. Based on the 400, it's approximately 25% of what the town kicks in. So it takes back up to 100,000, which the total 400 would be 500. So if you go to the darker red or the brownish looking line, that's all combined funding. So up there in 18, we're doing pretty good at the 1920/20. These numbers are approximate. They're close to a Ricky status. And then we dropped a little this year. And then again, in 2020, it's a bad year. We go down to 645. And then it drifts again down. We'd have to make that up. And the blue line is the fund balance. So we're at 686 for last year. And this year, we would use that fund balance to shore up this year's budget. And that would bring the fund balance down to 245. Again, year 2020, it flatlines at zero. And then it goes out to the other year. So could you show me the next chart then, Mike? Thank you. Okay, this is the total combined funding and the fund balance. So that's... those are real numbers right there of what's going to happen. And again, 2020, we'd have to make up that difference from 645. So we'd have to add to that. But it'd be another, what, four change? The next chart, please. Okay, now, it's another confusing chart. Yep. Stay with me. All right. The... for us to... What I propose is we draw down 100,000 per year. Instead of cutting the budget by 50%, we draw down 100,000 to get that fund balance lower. So the blue line, again, is 686. And each year, we're drawing down 100,000. So if... and then the towns, maybe the eventists, would go from 841 down to 741, and that levels. And the state funding would come back. And that would, because we're providing less by the town, that goes to 18. Now, the library, the big thick line on the bottom there, the green line, that would have to come from the library's own resources. This year, and this year will be zero. Next year will be 281. And then 118, 118. So basically, the top round is all funds combined. And again, we take down in 2020. If the library kicks in 281, that will be on track. And then after that, they'd have to kick in 118. And stay with that 112,000. So basically, you're taking that green line and flipping it over to shore off the top combined fund line. I hope everybody got it.
Can you move out to the original light? So if we... so if we do fund the library and we don't ask them for any of their money, do you have a lineup there for that? Because that would be...
The green line, that'd be the green line.
The green line?
Yes.
Well, they have 686 in the account. You're going to add 841. Then my math comes to 1.522 million dollars that they would have.
Right, well, that if they kept the reserve. If we kept on funding, if we made an effort of 841, they would keep that reserve. If you wanted them to use the reserve, then those numbers will obviously change.
So in keeping the reserve, going back to the last chart of 741, using 100,000 a year, they're still going to be able to get state funding?
No, if they lose...
So really, they don't want to lose that state funding? That's what I'm...
Right.
Right?
I agree. Certainly agree.
So if you're going to take 100,000 a year off to kick in, why can't you kick in a little bit more now? you kick in, kick in a little bit more now? We'll give you the eight forty-one, and you get your hundred and eighty-seven thousand.
Council President. Because I have one thing I just want to let you, I just reviewed the email that Patty Arroy said me, and, um, she is correct that dropping below the maintenance level will reduce those services. So thank you.
Lori, Lori Kelly, are you here? I saw you earlier. Lori, could you come up, I just want to have a conversation with you, ask you something. Addie, anybody from the library board would like to come up?
Come on down.
So as things stand right now, right, that, that has been cut funding by the library, Rick made a proposal earlier, and I want to know if you'd be willing to talk about this proposal. I understand that would probably lead to additional meeting, additional budget views, there'll be more work involved, but my question to you is, would you be willing to talk about that? To take a look at the reserve you have of the six eighty-six, put it back, transfer it to our general fund earmarked for the library build-out, you know that we have at least three or four RFPs coming in for the existing site, and we can go ahead and fully fund the library, the eight forty-one, is that something that the library board would consider? Because we look at that, I look at that, and people who do not come to these meetings because they, they don't want to become, they, they don't want to be chastised or, or made fun of, um, they, they look at that as taxpayer dollars you have, and that surplus is six eighty-six. So we'd all like to have a better, better library. I certainly do not want to have a library patron suffering for, for not having the ability to, to go to different libraries or to use our library. So I look at what Rick proposes, it's something that we should really strongly talk about, and we're willing to talk about that, to take the surplus we have, the six eighty-six, put it right back to the general fund earmarked for the build-out of the, of the current library, and fully fund you guys. And then we have the ability as a town council to take a look at additional funds that we can put in, while we do get the RFP back. I mean, I know that when the RFPs do come back, we'll need to have them go back to the library, take a look at the second floor, if they couldn't get in to, to take a look at the second floor, but is this a conversation that you're willing to have? It seems that it would solve everything here. It would allow this library to be fully funded and allow the tax base from the tax, tax payers to have their six eighty-six back in a way that we put it there for, to be able to use for the library.
Jill, I think you know I am not the person to ask for that.
That's why I asked Lori Kelly.
But let me read you, um, the thing about appropriations. An appropriation from the town and state, and the income of all funds belonging to the library shall be placed in the library fund created in Article Three of this chapter. And I'm sorry I didn't start with that, but this is the Rhode Island State law, section, it's Chapter Twenty-nine, Section Forty-two, Twenty-three, and it talks about library funds. So such funds shall be subject to the exclusive control of the trustees for the purpose of the maintenance of and improvements to the library. The town treasurer shall pay within the limits of the appropriations and other library funds in the hands of the Board of Trustees, all bills properly certified by such trustees. Now, as far as spending the money that we have, as you call a surplus, we have explained what the surplus is for. I, I would say that the board has already stated that part of that money has been put aside for other things, so I think that question has been answered.
So you're not willing to work with us?
Oh, my God.
That was my question to you, is would you be willing to sit down and work with us and take a look at that surplus? Because, I mean, what you said was very interesting, as far as a library entrusted and care. You were entrusted with the library, it isn't disrepair because, because it has not, the money was not put into it, which is a great example, right?
Well, we explained why money is not put into it.
I understand.
But since I've been director, we haven't put in much, I have gotten grants from Champlin Fund to pay for things that needed replacing, painting, furniture, lights, we did all that, we did maintain it until the point where the strategic plan and the board's plan and moving forward with the friend's support and everyone else was to come up with a new building. And we started that in two thousand and fourteen when we met with the town council, and they told us to look at the Belmont Building and look at the current building. And that's where we are.
I understand.
We're still planning on an alternate site because we do not feel this site meets our needs or the community's needs.
So putting the offer out to potentially look at working with you in this, in this aspect that Rick laid out, you're not interested in talking to us at all? Is that the answer?
That is, that is, maybe we could get a compromise. Could, could you commit twenty-five thousand a year to put towards building repairs?
You would think that would have to be in, in anyway, I mean, because right now, the library board trustees, and correct me if I'm wrong, Chief, as far as maintenance of the building, D K W takes care of the snow plowing and of, of the grass cutting, all those things. We take a look at the school, the school has someone that takes care of all that for them, and they have funds built in to make sure that the building's maintained. That didn't happen in this case.
We maintain the inside mostly, and that's why I got grants for the painting outside and things like that, because we didn't have the funds at the time.
But you put the fifty for the roof and you didn't put it on.
We were given fifty thousand by the council as a choice of paying for our consultant or putting in repairs into the roof. We paid for our consultant. And that's what Patience Jackson was hired to do the study on the building and its size.
I believe that we saw the capital count, Chris, is, is there fifty dollars, fifty thousand in the capital count for the roof specifically? Yes.
But that was what, that was what Laura, the finance director, told us, um, that she was putting it in the fifty, in the capital improvement, but we could use it according to the council, and I'm sure it's in the minutes, that we could fix one or the, you know, use it for one or the other, consultant or roof. And we have had the roof repaired. It's a new leak, so again, it's repaired in different spots, but as you know, the roof's design is terrible, so it just keeps coming up with different leaks and problems.
Right, and that's why I say you were entrusted with the care of it, and even if you do give it back to us, we're going to have to take care of those repairs, either whether we're going to sell it at a lower price to someone, or the taxpayer dollars are going to have to, have to go fund repairs of the building.
Jill, would a, would a good compromise, that we get a commitment from the library board of trustees to commit twenty-five thousand towards the repair for each year, that they occupy that space, is that something that everybody can get on board with?
No, I think the good compromise is what Rick put out.
I mean, we do have the fifty thousand in our capital budget.
I just think everybody should think about this and we can get together at some point and chat about this.
We don't want to lose that.
Is everyone, we, we don't want to level the air with the state funding. We don't want to lose anything.
Yeah, and the state funding, we applied for it for this year each, so it's September, so, you know, again, we won't go next year if we apply for it and get it.
And I understand that. Look, people can say what they want about what I campaigned on or what I said, and I will say it again, and it's been in the papers. I want the best library that the taxpayers of this town can afford, whether it's where it is now, a proposal that, we talked about Tiverton, I went to Tiverton Library, I saw the Tiverton Library, it's fabulous, town near Gansett Island, think can afford to put up a Tiverton.
How much was that library? Do you remember how much that library?
It's twelve to fourteen, and they raised, what, three and a half, four million?
They're, well, they have the twenty-year.
Danny Barry knows what they.
They have the twenty-year reimbursement for the state as we would, and in the end, they're going to be paying, Dan, correct me if I'm wrong, four million dollars for their eleven to twelve to fourteen million dollar library. With the fundraising, the state money, so I don't know how we, how you say we can afford it.
Well, you just saw the budget, you know, right now we don't have half a million to six hundred thousand to put into a library, but I'll ask you this question. So we're nine thousand square feet now, that's too small, right?
Right.
And Patience and Jackson recommended twenty thousand square feet?
Correct.
What building is twenty thousand square feet that we can purchase?
There is a Belmont, Belmont, yes.
Belmont's not twenty thousand.
With the liquor store.
Well, the liquor store's not going anywhere, we've made that clear.
Well, you've made a lot of it clear.
So, so we're going to go from a building that can't handle what we want to do in the plan to do another building that doesn't handle the plan. I could, I think I could get people in the library industry to write a plan for a twelve thousand square foot building, a twenty thousand square foot building.
And where would we put it?
A thirty thousand square foot building, and you can get different plans. The whole basis of the library is based on a plan.
If you made a plan.
If, yeah, excuse me, Matt, if you reduce the plan, then you can make the plan work in a facility of a certain size, am I correct? Could you put a plan together for a twelve thousand square foot building?
I guess you could put it together, but the state isn't going to reimburse for that, because that doesn't meet the needs of the community. So if you want to get state money, which is going to cut the cost of the library down.
Right, this is a public hearing of the budget, so we're going to try to get back to that.
Yeah, so to me.
So I think we, the budget, the budget, work sessions, this is very reminiscent of what happened Tuesday night.
I did ask Patty though.
I know, no, I'm, I'm, I'm just saying that that's, this conversation is similar to what happened Tuesday night.
Thank you for coming up. All right, so a couple things. Is everyone enjoying being held hostage by the town council right now?
Yeah.
It is like absolutely exhausting. So this, this plan over here, can you imagine them like sitting in some coffee shop, coming up with this plan, we're going to cut the budget, and then we're going to offer, this offer back to the town, so that we can renovate the old library, something nobody wants to do except for these three, and then we're giving them something back. It's, it's so insulting to everyone's intelligence out here to think that anyone's going to fall for this. The compassionate voice has come out. Thank you, thanks for coming up, I appreciate it. It's a joke, this is an absolute joke right now. I know it's frustrating, I know we had a crowd together, we've done this multiple times, the town has done this multiple times, come out, supported something, shown where the town stands, and it gets ignored. It happened with the sale of the building, it's happening now. They do not care what the majority of people here want. They serve a small inner circle, and that's all they care about. Nothing's going to change, they're going to vote, and they're going to vote, we all know that. The important thing is to not quit or get frustrated and disengage. The way to change it, the real change it, is to prepare for twenty-twenty. I see multiple people in the crowd here that are well-qualified to, uh, participate. So, like I said, keep coming to the meetings, do not get discouraged, because eventually things will swing the way the majority wants them to go, so, anyway, thank you, guys.
Does anyone want to talk, um, talk regarding the budget as part of the public hearing on the budget? All right, with that, I'm going to take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
For a second, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion, move five to zero.
Lori Roman, third and three, we have a little break. The Belmont Building is a town building. Anybody in the town should be able to have access to that building. The past previous town councils have encouraged the library board to focus on that building as the site for the new library. Many of you sprout these numbers of ten million, twelve million, whatever. How will we know what the cost will be unless you allow the library board to bring the architects there and to have them evaluate the building and come up with a plan? You have brought people into the present library to evaluate some of the shortcomings, but you can't compare numbers unless we have the facts. And the architects cannot come up with a plan without seeing the physical space. Perhaps you're afraid that it's going to be a price that you think will be very much inflated, and it won't be, but you should give the library board access to that building. It's a town building, and we should not have any situation where people in the town, particularly the library board that's been trusted by our charter, to take care of the library and not allow us to have access to that building. Thank you.
Hello, Dan Mary, one twenty-five Stratford Avenue, Gansett. A couple things that might help clear some things up, let me go to the question about the Tiverton Library. I was the fundraiser consultant for them. I raised, uh, all the private money, and I also ran the bond referendum for them. Their total cost for that library was ten point seven million. We had a bond for seven million, we raised three point seven million from the community. The community is the same size as Gansett, it's the same demographics. I was coming up here early, and then the time wasn't committed because of the RFP. You should know that RFPs are typically done by the library boards. Tiverton's was done by the foundation library board. I bet if you checked with Providence, their library board did the same thing. Town councils typically don't do that, so it's not unusual. You may want to do it, you have the right to want to, but it's done all across the country where it is done both ways, by the town council and by, uh, community, uh, boards. The purpose of a RFP is to find out what the cost is. What we need to know is what is that value of that? Is it outrageous that we should sell the building? Or is it feasible that maybe we should relook at it and maybe find a way to make it work? I think, I know this town can work together when it has to, I hope it happens at some point. But an RFP doesn't mean it's going to be used, it doesn't mean we're going to hire an engineer, it doesn't mean we're going to spend the money, it just means we're going to get a look at what it costs so that good decisions can be made. Right now, we're all in the blind, we're all in the dark, and I'd like to get out of the dark and work together. I just got the RFP, which doesn't obligate anyone here to do something with that, but it allows us to make decisions based on fact. And could you just help rethink that? Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Captain?
Tiverton is getting a million dollars a year from casino funds. That's million dollars infusion into their budget that they can spread around any way they want. It's, it's disingenuous to compare that, that situation with ours, but we have a town solicitor. I think the town solicitor should look at all of the issues with this RFP and should the library board have access or whatever, and he should make a decision. This is why we have a solicitor, he should be the neutral, you know, person that, that figures it out, not anyone, not people from the audience, maybe not even.
I thought I got elected to make decisions.
Listen, we have.
That's my, that's my agenda, this is a very.
Let him look at the whole situation and see if the library board can get access and.
This is not a legal question, this is not a legal question. And the Tiverton, the Tiverton Library was built before the casino.
They knew the casino was on the stage, and by the way, they had a shack to the library.
They did not ask if the casino was coming at that time. It was not sold, this would have been something. Thank you, Max.
Anyone else? All right, all in favor?
Hi. Yeah, yeah, so what do you think, guys? I mean, you know, I mean, can we get them in there?
Nick, please.
Can we get them in there and just take a look around and see? I mean, it might be less, it might be more, it might be, it might be, it's so expensive that, you know, it's ridiculous to put it there. Let's, let's find out. Since two thousand, yeah, since twenty fifteen, man, even you voted to put the library in the pier in September two thousand and fifteen. So was the plan not the day you wrote it, since two thousand and fifteen for you?
Patrick, I think I've shared that.
No, you haven't.
We had executive sessions together, this is the grant standing that has the. But you sat in the room with me where I told you all, I've said it publicly, privately, I've shared my concerns in two thousand and seventeen is when I started.
It's the campaign on the library.
I didn't campaign on the library.
Before the pier, so at, my question is, at that point, did you know you were going to vote against the Belmont, keep the, keep the covered location, and then defund the building?
I've shared with you and others, we were in executive sessions together, Patrick, which I can talk about now, where I shared where I thought it was a bad deal. Maybe you weren't listening to me, because you and two other council members weren't listening last year.
For the sixteen election.
Very disrespectful.
You fought the library, you fought the library.
I mean, Patrick, you were against the whole bond, and then you changed, so, I mean, I said, and I wanted, and I always said the existing site, that was my preference, I was, I said, if this doesn't work, if we don't get a good deal from Gilbane, I want to scope the existing site. A lot of people in town like the existing library, they think it's a nice neighborhood library, there's a lot of people who have a sentimental attachment to that library. They, so, um, I mean, a lot of people like, a lot of people like the existing library, so, anyway, um.
We're gonna lose, the state doesn't like it. I mean, we, we, some people may like it, but the state doesn't like it, and it's gonna be a problem if we don't make a move. All I'm asking is let these folks go into the building. If, if you wanna have the engineer escort them, whoever, police, have, have this big guy back here escort them, you know? I mean, whatever we gotta do, let's figure out what that entails to refit that building and the cost. We've been waiting years for this, and we're right there, we got the wall, the goalpost right there, we can go step over the line, just get this done.
All right, thank you.
Up and down wall.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No. Motion fair, two to three. I have an effort, 25, is a motion to fully, um, Charlotte Roy, which is library maintenance of effort for approximately 841,000 per year, as done in the previous years.
Okay, so, Jay, I saw Jesse and I again, and why don't you, why don't you do some of this here?
So this would be a motion outside of the budget hearings to specifically fund the library budget at level, to keep state funding, up and down vote, to keep state funding and keep the services we have, again, outside of the full budget, this is just a separate motion to handle this specific town department.
All right, thank you, all in favor? We, we discussed, we know, we just discussed this in public comment session.
It's a whole different...
No, it's not, we just discussed this, we just discussed this, guys, at length in the public hearing. This is an up or down vote on this, we just spent hours on it.
Mrs. Sullivan, please. Can you join me on this, please?
It's part of the public hearing.
I, I don't think separate discussion is warranted.
This is a whole separate agenda right now.
But it should, and it is incorporated in the budget conversation.
Can't handle this matter outside of the budget, it's part of the budget.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No. Motion fair, that's two to three. Thank you. And now we have our open for public comment section. Please conduct a separate, respectful fashion, and comments are for three minutes, and please go ahead. Would you like to speak?
We got 10 minutes.
My name is Stephen Denham from Brazziar, Level One, Longview Drive, Narragansett, that's in the old neighborhood of Scarborough. So I'm sure that all the council members addresses our matters of record, so I won't ask you where you all live, you know where I live. My threshold is approximately from this podium to the top step, first top step to the road. So last year, I had the unique experience of having a bus pull up in front of my house at 2 o'clock in the morning. It was accompanied by a Narragansett police officer in his squad car, and at 2 o'clock in the morning, something like 40 people drained out of that bus onto my property, disturbing me. I am a peace-loving man, and I do not like having my peace disturbed, and I certainly don't enjoy having that peace disturbed in a partnership with the town I pay taxes in. And I'm here tonight to make sure that come the end of May, when the students get a little bit more frisky, that I'm not disturbed again. And I don't want that to happen to you either, because I'd be happy to have that happen at your doorstep, okay? I do not want this to happen again, I didn't want it to happen last year, and I'm here to assure my peace of mind that this town does not partner with any promotion company that conducts bar crawls, dumping people onto my doorstep at 2 o'clock in the morning. Let me finish by saying, these were students, and I've never heard students more quiet and less disturbing ever in my time. It's not the students and their behavior, it's the practice of having buses collect these people and take their places and then drop them off in my neighborhood or yours. So please, do not enter into a partnership with a promotional company that's conducting bar crawls. This is insane, and it's disturbing, and I mean that word disturbing. I'm very upset about this, I don't expect it to happen, it to happen again. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
I can't express how thrilled I am to be able to read this letter and share the good news to the town of Narragansett. The letter is from Aaron Cuto, Chair of Ryle, Rhode Island Library Association. He said in this letter, "It is with great pleasure that I write to you to inform you that Laurie Kelly has been nominated for the Ryle Trustee of the Year Award. It is clear that Laurie is well-deserving of this award. We are happy to recognize all the great work done by Laurie with an award at our annual conference on Wednesday, May 22nd, at Bryant University. The Friends of Narragansett Library would like to present these flowers to Laurie for this award."
Yes.
Shouldn't that be a purple hat?
Thank you. Laurie Kelly, Wildfield Farm Road. I just wanted to go over a few things related to the library, I know we had a big thing on the budget tonight, but the library does charitable good works. We donate to community groups. And H&R Block, I believe, I couldn't be wrong on this, had an ad earlier before the tax date of April 15, where they said, "Our services are free, 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 free." And that's exactly what the library is. Our rooms are free, our programs are free, our tech advice is free, instructions on tech advice is free, book clubs are free, classes are free, movies are free, we have robos that are free, hotspots are free, nooks are free, transfer from VHS to CDs, free, genealogy bases, free, language study, free, car repair database, free, newspaper archive, free, museum passes, free, universal classes, free, online learning, and of course, it goes without saying, many people in the community require free internet, and we supply that free. You're right, we're not an enterprise fund, we cannot charge for anything. The purpose of town government is to collect taxes from the citizenship and pay for services that benefit all citizens. Public schools and public libraries have state maintenance of effort to, for that purpose. That is the business of town government. When you cut our operating budget, you cut the state aid for our operating budget, 25% of what we are relying on. If we do not take operating budget contribution from the state, you have effectively stopped any renovation or building money. And this was asked to OLS in December, so now we're beginning to see that this is better of a long-term plan of this council. Because if you say no to the 181,000, then you cannot apply for any renovation or building reimbursement, which we had estimated to be 2.3 million on the project that was selected. So not only are we out operating, we now have no money for any expansion or building programs, and this will cripple the library into the future. For those of you who are in real estate, it's astonishing to me that you're gonna go to families and encourage them to move to a town where you have dismantled the public library. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn? Oh wait, are you coming up? Come on.
Naomi McDonald, 13, Snell Road, Narragansett. I wanted to say two things. In my opinion, love of funding is the same as a decrease of budget. And number two, any decision to not accept 181,000 dollars of free money from the state is fiscally irresponsible.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion move five.